Call the Township of Sparta Planning Board meeting, May 18, 2022, 7:00 PM in session. Diana, can you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Quinn?
Here.
Dr. Parkett?
Here.
Ms. Etozcano?
Here.
Ms. Siski?
Here.
And Ms. Pukulueki?
Here. The Planning Board public meeting originally scheduled for a remote meeting at 6:00 PM has been rescheduled and it will be held in person at the Sparta Municipal Building at 65 Main Street, Sparta, New Jersey, and it will start at 7:00 PM, just for the record. It's customary, we always start our meeting by saluting our great American flag. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Our pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Collins, I think we're going to have a stay on approving the meetings of the May 2nd, 2022 minutes, correct?
That's fine.
All right. We have two things on the agenda, three things on the agenda. One, I think, will be carried forward, carried to the next meeting due to not getting the notices in, correct? Tom?
Check with Diana on the date on that, Mike.
What's that?
Check with Diana because the next meeting we may have a time shift up. Check with Diana because it has to be moved to a date certain.
Okay. You want to check, you want to do that right now? Check on the date?
Yes. Got to move it to a date certain.
Well, they didn't notice.
Oh, they haven't noticed at all?
Yeah, they haven't noticed.
They didn't notice at all, so.
Oh, okay.
So, that's, eh, the third matter, EFK and transport, you should schedule for them to notice for that meeting. You've already had a very full agenda on the June 1st meeting.
Right.
So, June, I'm sorry, yes, June 15th, Diana, like you.
Yeah, so, between 15th.
Be June 15th?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so, not that there's else, no, but not others, but basically, the EFK transport matter will be scheduled for June 15, 2022, at 7:00 PM.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is JCB Development LLC, application number 677, it's an extension request of preliminary and final site approval based on a resolution memorialized on July 15, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, this is pretty straightforward. The applicant has requested an extension of the statutory protection period for the prior approval. That's customarily granted. I recommend it to you, and it's not a public hearing, it's just a motion to approve the one-year extension request.
So, moved.
Hold on a second.
Hold on a second.
Oh, go ahead, Joe.
On the line.
Go ahead.
Hold on a second.
Diana, call the roll.
Councilwoman Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Parkett?
Yes.
Ms. Etozcano?
Yes.
Ms. Siski?
Yes.
And Ms. Pukulueki?
Yes. Okay. So, the next applicant is Six Aaron Way LLC, application number 693. Good evening.
Good evening.
Just give us one minute for Mr. Dunn to work on his rector set over here. Good evening, members of the board. I'm John Urson, Shank Price. We represent Six Aaron Way LLC. It is, I would say it's nice to see you all, but I'm actually seeing you all. That is pleasant, so it's nice to be here. This is application 693. This is block 16003, lots 3 and 4. I think the board members are probably aware that the site plan for this property was approved back on July 15, 2020, seems like just yesterday. That was application 680 for the record. We are here tonight seeking an amendment to that site plan for the purposes of a few changes, but primarily to accommodate the proposed tenant who is here and is ready to move in if this application could be approved. So, my thought was to introduce Mr. Dunn as quickly as possible and let him go through specifically the changes that are being proposed to the site plan, but any of the members, of course, can, if you want a little more information about the site plan that was approved, the building's completely built and the site is mostly finished, if not completely finished, so, but if members of the Planning Board want a recap of that application, we'll certainly give that, but my intention is to introduce Mr. Dunn, have him sworn in, and then go right to what the amendments are.
Okay, great. Mr. Collins, would you like to swear in Mr. Dunn?
Yes, Mr. Dunn, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
And please state your name and address and spell your last name.
Jason Dunn, D-U-N-N. The address is 11 Lawrence Road, New Jersey. That's my business address.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. The board recognizes and accepts the qualifications of Jason Dunn as a professional planner, and please go ahead, gentlemen.
And I also just want to tell the board, just for organization purposes, we recognize that there's a component of this application that has an environmental concern. We have produced an environmental report. The environmental expert is here and will testify, so Mr. Dunn will lay the groundwork with respect to the change, and when we get to that narrow issue of the environmental concern, we're expecting Mr. Rossi to testify as well. Just so the board members were aware, as Mr. Dunn goes through some of those issues, he'll touch upon them, but we're going to rely on Mr. Rossi's testimony at the end. So, Mr. Dunn, perhaps you could just give the briefest overview of what was approved and what's at the site, and then we get into talking about what the proposed amendments are.
Sure. As Mr. Urson said, we were here in July 2020 with the site plan approval. We had some variances for impervious cover and parking in the front yard, among some other design waivers. I want to say that this amendment does not affect those or impact those variances or design waivers. Parking has not changed. The building shape has not changed as part of this amendment. The site changes are really limited to a couple of minor items. This is just the front sheet that we all have for the amended application, shows the key map. It's lot 3, block 16003, formerly lots 3 and 4. They were officially combined before this application. This is a sheet 2, which was provided as part of the submittal, but I did add some color to it for clarification.
Why do you make that A1, A1 and just the sheet 2 with colored markings?
Yes, it's titled layout and lighting plan. A transformer was placed by JC P&amp;L on a concrete pad, which is nine feet by nine feet in the front yard. That is going to be screened with evergreen trees. That was not contemplated on the first approval. There were three, there were three light, wall-mounted lights in the front of the building. They've been deleted, and two light poles have been added between the parking lot and the road at Aaron Way. We reevaluated the lighting and it conforms with the ordinance requirements. There will be two HVAC units to the north of the building toward the front to accommodate heating and cooling, and one of the main reasons we're here is to talk about one of the proposed tenants, which would be a glass floor manufacturing facility. It takes up about 50% of the building. I made some copies of two samples of the product that this company does from their website. If I could enter that into exhibit.
Sure. V82. Why don't you label that? Is it two things or is it one thing?
It's a two, it's a two-page document. Why don't I give you a copy just for reference?
Thank you. So, you can mark it A1, A2, and it'll be two-page.
And I'm going to give Mr. Simmons a copy, and is it acceptable to approach and distribute these copies to the board?
Please.
That'd be great.
Okay. There's six papers. Thank you.
We thought it would just illustrate what the tenant actually does, if you could see something from their website and see what they actually manufacture. So, go ahead, Mr. Dunn. If you want to describe, since we just distributed this, why don't you describe what it is in the pictures that we're actually calling the board's attention to?
Again, this is from their website. The first sheet shows an example of one of their projects, which shows a glass floor beneath some living room furniture and also automobile showcased within a glass structure, presumably also built by this company, Glass Flooring Systems Incorporated. The second sheet is another example showing a glass floor system inset within a wood flooring system with a pool table on top of it and showcasing some trophies and sports memorabilia, if you will. It just kind of, I wanted to give the board an idea of what product is actually going to be coming out of this facility. And another important aspect of this is to show the board how the glass systems are assembled, and one of those critical pieces, of course, is the framing and the inset pieces between the glass. That is typically constructed of metal, some sort of metal, whether it's aluminum or steel, welded, and then it would need to be painted. So, that brings us to one component of this use within the building that has a state-of-the-art paint booth and paint storage area. Again, we have an expert on the environmental and operations of this paint booth. It's only a small part of the business that would be utilized about one or two days per week by people who are specialized in the training of the paints and the cleaning and the containment of whatever solvents or paints they are using. The, I just wanted to reiterate that the previous cover is not changing as part of this amended site plan. That was an important part of the previous application, that we not exceed 50%, and we still are at 50% for this project. That's really all I have is for the changes. We already talked about the site work. It's nearly complete. The top coat needs to be paved and striped. I went out there just now before the meeting. It appears to me that most, if not all, the landscaping is installed per the plan, and the signage, the freestanding sign has not been erected yet. I'm not sure if the applicant still desires that, but they do want a sign on the building that would comply with your zoning ordinance. That's about all I have.
Okay. And do you want to comment a little bit further about the layout, or do we want Mr. Rossi to do that?
We do have, and an architectural plan was submitted for this portion of the building. I could show the board that, but really kind of his work, how Mr. Rossi testified, talk about where, how, the distance of things, where things are located.
Okay. And just, I just wanted to make the point, and Mr. Dunn, before we let you go, the part of the point in showing these pictures was to show you that of the product they make, the only thing that's painted is the framework, the metal framework, the small pieces that actually are depicted in these photos, not any larger item, and that's why you're going to hear in Mr. Rossi's testimony, the paint booth is so small and so contained because it's those framing members that's painted, not any kind of panels or anything like that. Is that correct?
Yes, and my understanding is they're assembled in part at this site and then shipped to whatever construction job they're doing and then complete assembly there.
And at this point, and we'll have Mr. Rossi talk more about that, about the layout and the small paint booth in a moment, but have you, do you want to cover the comments in Mr. Simmons's report? Mr. Chairman, do you want us to cover Mr. Simmons's report now in our responses, or do you want him to lead that discussion?
I think we should discuss that now.
Okay.
Our office did have a chance to take a look at the reports that were provided by the board, including Mr. Simmons's report and from the Water and Utilities Director and the Environmental Commission, the police, and the fire marshal. And we did provide a written response this afternoon. I know it was kind of late, but I didn't know if the board had a chance to get a copy of this. Essentially, it starts out with responses to Mr. Simmons's plan, agreeing with all of his comments, starting with number 2. There is a correction that needs to be made about the front yard setback. As Mr. Simmons pointed out, there are jogs in the building that are, that extrude from the building about one foot, so the setback would be 103.5 instead of 104.5, and that would need to be corrected, but it is still complying with the front yard minimum setback of 75 feet. Number 3 regarding the site plan and the concrete pad for the transformer. I noted just now that there were four evergreen shrubs that were planted around the transformer to help screen it. There may be more planted, but I think that's sufficient. It doesn't totally screen it, it's.
I suggest, Mr. Chairman, I saw the four trees tonight, and that's a good start, but I think maybe at least three more.
We could agree to do that.
We agree to three more.
I agree.
On sheet page 3, number 4 regarding the parking, total 100 parking spaces need to be striped, we agree. B, there are 57 spaces left after we apply what's needed for this tenant, and we would keep that in mind as we reckon in the future. Number 5 regarding stormwater management, just notes that everything goes to one common stormwater basin, and stormwater basins are not required on this lot. And B is to note that the last catch basin before it enters the common storm drain system should have a sump and should be maintained, and we would agree to do that. Number 6 is regarding the lighting plan. Hours of lighting are dusk to dawn, and that's noted on sheet 2. B, the revised lighting plan has the three building mounted lights deleted and two additional pole mounted, as I pointed out on the plan. The light poles have not yet been constructed, but that's coming, I think. C is that the, he notes the parking area is adequately lit with this lighting plan. How am I doing, Dave? Very good. Okay. Number 7 is for utilities. A is for the water. The building is already connected to the township system, and the size of the water service line for the tenant is to be approved by the water department. We would agree for that.
Is there a separate line included for fire protection?
This building, this building is your sprinkler, so I believe that it should be, yes.
The answer's yes.
The septic system is installed and has been approved by the county health department. Number 8 regarding the landscape plan, section 18-5.30 has some requirements about the mass plantings and the percentages required. We did an analysis on the original submittal or the resolution compliance, I'm not sure which, but we did provide that to Mr. Simmons's office. Number 9 regarding the architectural plans, we're asking for two HVAC units, as I described. B is adjust the plan to show the bump outs in the front. And number C is a comment about the label as warehouse, but really it's kind of a hybrid of warehouse and manufacturing, so we could correct that. I would note that the parking, the parking does not, it's the same for warehousing and D is about the paint booth and to address the wellhead protection area for the township. We will be addressing that in the next testimony. Number 10 is regarding the signs. We provided the board on the packet, an example of the glass floor systems logo and lettering. The sign hasn't been designed yet, but it would go on the building, it would not be backlit, and it would be the maximum allowed, or won't exceed the maximum allowed by your ordinance. And the freestanding sign, I don't think there's one constructed, and there's not one going to be constructed, even though it was approved at the last round. Number 11 is regarding fire protection. I did speak to the architect and he confirmed that it is sprinkler. Number 12 is the EIS discussion about the discharge of hazardous materials. We'll have that in our next expert, and the EIS notes painting work in the wellhead protection area, and we'll talk about that in our next expert about how that will be handled. C is regarding the floor drains are not allowed in the building. That's a condition from the original approval. We would still agree to that. There would be no floor drains. 5 is about, I'm sorry, D is about condition number 5 regarding there's no use of hazardous material or discharge of hazardous materials into the property or the septic system or storm drain system. We'll provide more discussion about that with our next expert. Number 13 is about the construction details. Details for the sign would be needed. We intend to get a zoning permit for that sign in the future. And 14, we agree to get all the approvals that are needed and do an as-built plan. That's the end of Mr. Simmons's letter. The other, yeah, the other responses, we're just going to provide testimony.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would not have any more questions from Mr. Dunn unless Mr. Simmons has any, takes exception to any of the responses or has further issues that we should address.
Mr. Chairman, I would say these responses were acceptable, and we're just waiting to hear from the next witness providing the mark of issues to be raised.
Okay, should I open up to the board, see if you have questions from Mr. Dunn? Diana, why don't you just call each of us and.
Councilwoman Quinn?
So, what are the hours of operation? I mean, now that you have a tenant there, what are the hours?
The normal business hours are 8 to 4:30, right, Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, I did ask, I was just looking for my notes.
That's okay. 8 to 4:30, is it Monday to Friday? Do you work on weekends, Monday to Friday?
Yeah.
Okay. With regard, do you want to talk about the stormwater basin when the environmental expert comes in, or?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll wait on that. With regard to the design of the building, I think my questions with regard to design are more toward the environmental concerns, so I'm going to wait to ask those questions. So, is this, if I researched you properly, you have a location, there's a location in Whippany existing already? Is that accurate?
We cannot, we have to swear in anybody who's answering from the audience.
Well, I'm going to ask Mr. Urson. Is there?
There's an existing.
Or Mr. Dunn. We need a witness, not, it shouldn't be John, so if, I mean, we could just swear in whoever was answering from the audience, if that's helpful.
Yeah. Mr. Conklin, why don't you step up to the microphone for just a minute? Mr. Conklin is the owner of the proposed tenant, so why don't we just introduce him, and if Mr. Collins wants to swear in this way, if there are a few questions about, in that area, we'll just get you directly.
Right. Mr. Conklin, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you. And please state your name and address and spell your last name.
Twain Conklin, C-O-N-K-L-I-N, 2061 Lakeside Drive West in Highland Lakes, New Jersey.
And Mr. Conklin, just to go back and make the record a little bit better, this, your business, this is your business, you're the owner?
Correct.
And you, your intended business hours are 8 to 4:30?
Correct.
And you typically operate five days a week, Monday through Friday? And Councilwoman Quinn was asking you, you currently have a location?
Yes.
And where is that?
It's in Whippany, New Jersey.
Okay, and that is your only location?
Yes.
And how long have you been in business?
Six years.
Okay. So, are you keeping, you have an existing operation already in Whippany?
Yes.
So, is this a secondary location or?
No, this would be our primary.
Your primary?
We've grown out of where we live.
Okay. So, question is, based on, based on that, what's your anticipated traffic flow up there? So, I know that you're manufacturing and warehouse, so what is the traffic like around your business? And what kind, what types, is it box trucks?
Sure, let's start with how many employees you have.
We have 16 employees.
Okay, 16?
16.
Okay.
Can you get closer to the microphone, please? Make sure it's on.
It sounds like it's on.
We have 16 employees.
And could you give some testimony about what's the normal truck traffic, either in delivery of materials or in taking finished product out?
We don't typically have a truck every single day.
Okay.
We might have a box truck pick up or deliver.
Okay.
FedEx, UPS, but, you know, I would say most it's one delivery or one truck a day.
A box truck size.
Box truck size, yeah.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to clarify.
Sure.
Those are my questions right now. Thank you.
Dr. Parkett?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Robinson.
Ms. Etozcano?
I don't have any questions.
Ms. Siski? And Ms. Pukulueki?
I just have one quick question. Is it the intake of materials, is that stored internally in the space you're looking to build out?
Is your material all stored inside?
Everything is stored inside.
All right. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, I would call Mr. Rossi as a witness there.
That'd be great.
Yes.
Good evening. Mr. Rossi, please, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
And please state your name and address and spell your last name.
Frank J. Rossi, R-O-S-S-I, and my business address is 330 Phillips Avenue, South Hackensack, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mr. Rossi, just so the board, and you could either sit or stand, whatever you're more comfortable doing off the microphone. Mr. Rossi, could you give the board just a quick recap of your educational background?
I have a bachelor's science in chemistry, a master's in chemical engineering, and I'm an LSRP with the state of New Jersey. I've been doing this work for 40-plus years, and I'm currently employed by Boswell Engineering. I head the environmental department at Boswell.
And you have frequently testified either before boards or courts?
Many times.
Mr. Collins, is that testimony sufficient to have Mr. Rossi considered an expert in environmental matters?
Does the board members have any questions on his qualifications? So, yes, the applicant's qualifications as an environmental expert and an LSRP are acceptable and confirmed, and please go ahead, gentlemen.
Mr. Rossi, could you tell the board, you were asked to review and comment on this application, is that correct?
Yes, I was.
Okay, so why don't you just start with telling the board what you looked at as part of your review?
When we first were contacted to look into this, we first wanted to know what the operation was, and we knew the sensitivity of the location of this, of this building, and we wanted to see what was going to be the best approach to protect the environment in this, in this operation. So, what we did was we worked with the owner and the property owner and the business owner and came up with the state-of-the-art equipment for painting and cleaning the guns and transferring paint. So, what we did was have 400-square-foot paint booth, which is state-of-the-art, has all kinds of filters and bells and whistles on it, even filters the air going out, so nothing leaving the paint booth has any toxins in it. nothing leaving the paint booth has any toxins in it. It also has safeguards built in, so if the filters are not changed, there's bells and whistles and it shuts the system off.
Mr. Rossi, could you just illustrate for the board, you said a 400-square-foot paint booth, how does, how does, how is, how is that as a percentage of the tenant's occupancy?
The tenant's occupancy is 13,000 square feet, and the spray booth plus the mixing area is, I think, 480 square feet, so it amounts to about 4% of the building's overall space.
So, what did you look at then?
Well, we looked at, when you have, actually, when you're painting, you have to transfer paint, and you also have to make sure the guns are cleaned. So, you have the solvent that has to be used to clean these guns. You also have paint, you have residual from that paint when you don't use it all. So, we discussed with the business owner methods of keeping that solvent recycled so that there's less ability for that stuff to be spilled over, or you don't need to, you don't have to maintain a lot of that material because you're constantly recycling the same material through the guns. And if you contain everything within that area of the spray booth and the spray room, there's less chance of having spillage outside in other areas or people walking off with that material and it get lost. So, everything is contained within that one area. So, your paint, your, your paint gun cleaner and your spray booth, all that operation is done within 480 square feet in a atmosphere that is purified.
And let's, let's talk about the, the paint booth. The paint booth is a sealed room, could you talk a little bit about that and what protection that provides?
What they're using is called an act, and I don't know if you have, you have this report in front?
Yes, they have them.
Okay. It gives a clear explanation of the paint booth and, within the content of the report. The paint booth is all locked together, it's a state-of-the-art system having little or no contamination concerns. The booth's system provides a enclosed area so that there's, nothing escapes from there, and it has a state-of-the-art system for purifying air and filter systems that take care of the, the spray that's emitted off of the guns while you're spraying, spraying parts.
And so, you're describing this, this 400-square-foot area of sealed paint booth?
Yep.
What's, describe the floor that would be in the area of that, that sealed paint booth.
A lot of concerns comes in when we deal with contamination, is that it gets dumped on this, on the ground, or, as, as we call it terminology, the back door, they throw it out the back door. And we want to always prevent that, because that's where your, your main contamination comes from, is people getting rid of it by throwing it out the back door. So, first of all, everything outside is paved. Second of all, nothing should be leaving the spray booth area or that paint solvent area. And then, secondly, the floor inside there, you have six inches of concrete, and you have your sub-basin, and then you, well, you have your plastic, they put that vapor barrier, and then you have your QP under that. A floor that doesn't have cracks in it, of course, it's a brand-new floor, has, it's, it has integrity, so the solvent is not, even if you have spillage or paint or something, you can immediately wipe it up off the floor. It's not gonna seep in and go right through the concrete into the subsurface. So, you're gonna have a barrier, an impervious barrier between the spillage and the soil beneath it.
And so, is, is your testimony that if there were spillage, if there were spillage of paint in the paint booth, that does not prevent, that does not present an environmental hazard?
No, because I would assume that the personnel are trained to properly wipe that up, and not only that, you're not gonna be one of walking through that material. So, you're gonna clean it up as quickly as possible, but with that in mind, the transfer of the material is done in the, in the paint, in the paint room, in the storage rooms, where they're taking paint from a one-gallon container and putting it into the spray can, which is one quart. So, it's very small amounts of material that's being transferred. So, your spill is not gonna be on this, you know, you dump a gallon...
Say, say that again, purposes.
Okay.
Say that again, talk about the quantity.
The quantity that they have, they sprayed black and white paint, and they come in gallon cans. The guns hold a quart, because they're only spraying parts, they're not spraying cars or buses or anything like that, they're just spraying parts that are used with the, with the panels, the pieces that go in between. So, it's not a lot of spraying that goes on in there, they're just spraying these parts. I think they do it one or two days a week. And they have a gallon of paint, they pour it into the quart container that they spray with, and then they spray, when they're done spraying, they go back to the room, they have to clean the gun out. Those guns are expensive, if you don't keep them clean, then you have a problem. So, you go back to this, to this, to the room, you, you open it up, you recycle that cleaner through it, the gun gets cleaned, the solvent stays in. Now, that solvent has a five-gallon pail underneath it. So, as you're cleaning it, that material is going through a filtration system, getting recycled, and it's going back, back around and around. It lasts probably about two months, depending upon use. And then, what you would have is you would have a scavenger come in, somebody that's licensed, would pick that drum up, because it has one hole in the top, you put the bung on the top, close it off, they pull it out, take it away. Now, with that being said also, since they would probably be considered a small hazardous waste generator, there's strict permit, not permit requirements, but record-keeping that needs to be done. And you need to make sure you keep good records so that they're able to justify this in case somebody comes in and wants to know where the material went. So, you do get a manifest to where the materials, the spent material has gone, and at that point, you, you keep records. So, at any time, somebody could go in and ask the business owner, I'd like to see your manifests and records, just to make sure that everything is properly disposed of. I mean, that's not unheard of.
So, with respect to the paint, you're indicating that environmental mitigant is the small quantities of the paint?
Right.
Okay. And in the area of the paint booth, there are no floor drains?
No floor drains.
And there's no wash sinks?
No wash sinks.
Nowhere near the paint?
What we ask them to do is to locate, and I think we have a figure...
We have, we have the architectural plan up that's been submitted, if that helps you.
It does.
Or you could refer to Adrian.
I can point it out right here.
Just, just for the record, let's, I just want to see, this is the Borarty Fit Out Unit Number One, and this was submitted, it's not marked up in any way.
This, this will give you an idea of what we're talking about. The spray booth and the paint storage area and where they clean the gun is all right in this area right here. You can see how small it is compared to the size of the building. What we ask them to do is keep this as far away as they can from the bathrooms and anywhere that they're, if you're using the floor drain. So, you would have to intentionally come out of here, walk all the way across the building, dump something in there, and that just wouldn't make sense. That just wouldn't make sense. And if it did, then, then there would be a problem. I mean, you, you know, you have to do record-keeping. If you can't be unloading your stuff into your septic system, and not only that, you're gonna have problems with your system, especially if it's clean. So, I believe the owner, and not only that, you know what the environmental regulations and stuff that, this is not the 80s anymore. You get caught doing something like that, that could be jail time. And not only that, these people would lose everything they own, they would, not only put them in jail, but whatever the cost of that cleanup, but would come off of them personally. So, the consequence is too bad that, to do something like that.
So, let me, let me just recap a little bit, where the, as you can see, the pictures that were distributed.
Yeah.
So, the, this illustrates that they're, they're painting the small parts, the, what would you call these?
Framing.
The framing of the, the glass systems?
Correct.
And not anything larger than that?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's small quantities of paint?
That's correct.
In a sealed paint booth?
That's correct.
With no floor drains?
No floor drains.
And let's go back to, you testified, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure we fully made the point, but for the solvent?
Yes.
There's one five-gallon quantity of solvent in the vicinity of the paint booth?
It's within...
Within the paint booth?
Within, not within, it's within this portion.
It's in this section. Okay.
Okay, so it's at that 80-square-foot section that's attached?
And you said something, and I just want to make sure that, that we made it clear to the board, they, they don't store solvent and backup solvent, they recycle the solvent, and somebody comes and takes away the used solvent and brings a new solvent system, a new solvent supply.
That's correct. This is what, this is what I'm, what I'm looking at.
Okay. And what, is that tabbed in your report?
This is tabbed in the report, yes it is.
Okay. And just, just for the record?
Yes.
S-50M manual flex solvent spray gun cleaner. Could have been a shorter name.
Yeah.
And so, the importance of this testimony, though, is that there is not solvent and backup solvent stored, that this is used, recycled, and when it's time to replace it, the company that...
Properly disposed.
The company that comes and takes it away to properly dispose it brings the new supply.
That's correct. And terminology is called cradle to grave, so they take it, and they just write to grave, cradle to grave.
So, do you have an opinion about whether this use in a configuration and with the precautions that have been employed here present a, any material environmental danger to this area and the occupant?
If properly maintained and functioned and used, there should be no, no problem at all. I mean, it's, it's not, it's a very demented, dismountable material. You're talking about, you know, even if you were to spill, this bucket were to go over for some reason, I mean, you could spill it up, it's contained within that 80-square-foot area. It's not gonna be dumped into the ground. I mean, I don't see somebody going out there and constantly pour material into the ground because that would, that would be a problem. And you would have a problem...
Well, it would make no sense if...
No sense. It would make no sense.
If it's being recovered and replaced by a supplier.
Correct. And he has, like I said, reporting that he has to do under, as a small quantity generator to the State of New Jersey. So, they're gonna want to know, something's gonna come up if he's not getting rid of material properly.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions, if we open up to the board's questions now, if that's appropriate.
Thank you. Dan, would you like to go call the roll?
Counselor Whitman. Somehow I drew the lucky number, huh? I'm always first tonight? Okay. So, a couple of questions that I have.
Sure.
You mentioned that there's X amount of inches of concrete, and then the barrier, and then the actual container of this paint booth, correct?
Correct.
So, I know that you were saying if, when, that, you know, there's no cracks because it's brand-new and all that kind of great stuff. My question is, obviously, you know, we hope that they're here for a long time, if this gets approved, then, you know, it's concrete and it's a vapor barrier. So, my question is, wouldn't it be better if there was, since the company makes a glass floor, maybe they put a glass floor in between so that there's absolutely no...
That's a great point. I thought that we needed some clarity. The spray booth itself is, are using the current floor inside the space, or is it come with its own floor?
Current floor within the space.
So, so is it outside the realm? I mean, I'm a simple person, is it outside the realm to request?
Well...
You know, that there be, instead of just a, you know, a barrier on cement, that since this is what the company does, that they put a glass, you know, a thick glass in between? Because I think we all know, you know, concrete is porous, containers are containers, over time, the, and the glass doesn't. So, I'm just saying, if I, from my perspective, I'm asking the question.
There, there's a...
Is it durable? Do they have that in Whippany? I don't know. I looked it up, but it doesn't say specifically, so I'm, I'm asking.
There is, there's a, a number of things you can do. You could apply to that, to the surface of the concrete, minus the glass. I don't know, he would, he would have to testify for the glass, but I'm saying there's...
We intend to epoxy the floor in the building.
Okay, that's us. Yeah.
Well, we intend to do the whole building, not just the...
So, there's gonna be a glass floor through the whole thing?
No. Not a glass floor.
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
He, he indicated that they were going to do an epoxy layer on the floor.
Okay. A sealant.
Right.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, for 400 square feet of this, since environmental's a big concern here, you know, is it within the realm of possibility that there could be underneath the booth, because that's the concern, right? Something that's above and beyond just the epoxy that gets put through the rest of the building, is my question.
Yeah, so, Mr. Rossi, I think we should address Counselor McQuinn's, would, would you, in your expert opinion, would you find that the epoxy layer is enough, or would you look for something more? And if it was a glass floor, which is a relevant question given the, the tenant, would you be concerned about the joints in the glass?
That's, yes. What they were suggesting is what I was just gonna say. In fact, I'm looking at it right now in my own garage, to be honest with you. There are different treatments now that you can use on the floor that are epoxy likes and epoxy coatings, or pliable coatings, and they actually put them down in layers, and then you probably saw it, they throw the, the chips on top, the paint chips on top, and it gives you that nice look in there. That's a coating that would, would help take care of spider cracks and also add to the transmissivity of that, so it doesn't allow that, that anything that spilled to go into or seep into that concrete on the surface, which would stain it when you wiped it up. With the epoxy with that, it gives a more glossy-type finish, so you could wipe stuff up easy in there, and it, and it gives, concrete over time will give dust also. You don't want dust in paint, am I, am I right? That's right.
And, and maybe, this would be a good time, if you don't mind, you, you describe to me how you recover the paint that it dried.
Right. So, so, any excess, any excess paint that we would have out of whatever leftover from the spray gun or in a can, gets poured into a, a tool, which he has the documentation for?
Yeah.
That actually hardens everything and turns it into a puck, and that would also be disposed of by a third-party source that then takes away any of our waste, whether it's the solvent or hardened paint.
So, just, just to be clear, because I want to make sure if they could hear that, it all...
Is that microphone on?
It is on, but I guess it's not.
Okay.
I'll keep moving.
I'm sorry, I just don't want to have to keep me...
Yeah. Any excess paint, whether by spraying or leftover in a can, you reduce, you don't take out and dispose of it later?
No, we have a, there's, there will be a machine that's gonna turn that into basically like a hardened hockey puck.
Okay.
And it all, that's all included within that 480-square-feet.
So, it's not stored as liquid?
No.
Okay. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Right.
The other thing is, that's one, the other thing is, where, where are these infamous drums stored? So, I know you're saying that the, anything that, you said that a company will come...
No drums.
No drums.
No drums.
The solvent is five gallons, pail.
And they just take it from underneath that machine and switch it out.
Okay, so the company that comes to that, it gets, is picking up a five-gallon container?
Yes.
Not a drum? I just want to clarify that.
Yes, that is correct.
When you think drums, I think it gets overwhelmed.
It's gonna be, I don't know if you've ever heard of Safety Clean?
Mm-hmm.
Right, that's who will be the servicing company that's gonna come, and that's what they do, right? They're gonna come and take whatever waste product that we have, and they're gonna replenish us with the solvent for the, the cleaning of the gun component, and they'll also take away any of the hardened pucks from the paint that will get baked and create this hockey puck with the tool, and it's all self-contained within the booth.
Well, Mr. Conklin, just to summarize a little bit for the board, there, there will never and there can never be any incentive for you to dispose of the liquid improperly because the solvent is taken away by the company and the extra paint is taken away in solvent form.
Correct.
And the, and those five-gallon containers are stored in the paint room?
In the paint room.
Okay, so that's another important clarification, they're not gonna be stored outside the building, it's gonna be in the paint room.
Everything is super self-contained in this, there's a...
Counselor McQuinn, even, even what you just said, I want to clarify one more time, Councilman Quinns, even, even what you just said, I wanna clarify one more time. Not contained for solvent, one.
One container, but it's all contained in this room?
Correct, because it's only one, it's recycled when it's done and it's time for it to go. Or one container goes and then one goes.
One five gallon container and another five gallon container takes its place.
Right.
Okay, so I just wanna clarify that. All right, and can you just show us again where the paint booth is in connection with the, just so everyone's clear, where the paint booth is in connection to the, so it's on an outside wall?
Outside wall.
Yes, okay. So it's not that everyone's gonna be coming through the building, picking this up and going, it's on an outside wall, the access point will be to the outside right there.
Come in here, pick the stuff, go out.
Okay.
So if we could stay on the topic of the spray booth right now, you're using the exterior wall as well as part of the containment or the system you're putting in?
No, no, no.
Has four sides to it?
Four sides and a roof.
Hundred percent contained.
And then as far as the seal, the seams along the floor line of where the, where they sit, are you sealing those? Are you caulking them or sealing them?
This thing is really the state of the art equipment for a paint booth as far as not allowing anything.
So if a gallon can of paint spills while they're transferring into the gun, it hits, stays within
Staying within.
The spray booth, it doesn't go out, outside or seep outside
Exactly.
The spray booth area.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the filtration system is internal to that unit?
Yes, it's all integrated as.
Completely separate from the rest of the filtration from the building, it's its own entity for the.
Its own entity.
Exactly.
Yeah?
So I have one more question. So just to clarify also, because I think, you know, when we hear paint booth, I mean, obviously, this is professional. And even though you're just painting very small things, I know one of the concerns was if you, you know, we think of a painting project and you got paint on your hands and now you have to wash your hands. I'm assuming, I'd just like you to walk us through, so someone who's in there painting this, are they wearing?
They're wearing a suit.
Okay, they're wearing a suit, their hands are covered, so.
And a respirator and they're in a, in basically what do you call like the hazmat suit.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, obviously, the suit is gonna get the paint on it and then that suit is gonna be put away. So you, it's not like we're gonna have people washing hands with paint in a sink.
No.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. I assumed that to be the case.
Well, that, that's a good question. I mean, as far as you're, you're deconning, your employees going in and out of the booth, where will they be putting on and taking off the tieback suits and or?
In that utility space.
And what are they, and what are they doing with their spent tiebacks? Are they putting them in?
They're also gonna go with Safety Clean.
So Safety Clean provides a container that after a used tieback?
Yeah.
Mask, et cetera, go in, they recycle that and dispose of that properly?
Right.
And that's all stays within that?
Yes.
Pretty much that area in that booth?
Technically called the mixing room. That's part of the spray booth itself, right? That's where all, any paint that we have, any solvent, the guns, the equipment that the users are going, are going to wear, everything is self-contained.
Okay. Are the employees that are going to be spraying the, the metal or the equipment, are they required to have any certain training, certifications, licenses?
We require them to be trained.
Under just basic OSHA training or?
Basic OSHA training for han, for handling the paints and whatever chemicals they might be handling along with the operation of the tools. And they're gonna, they're also be trained based on the functionality of this booth.
I just have one more question about the booth if I like, Mr. Chairman, just one more. So understanding this is a self-contained unit, separate and apart, you know, from the building itself. Fire suppression within that unit, it looks like it's built into the unit itself, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I have, I saw the pictures of it, it looks like everything is built in, but I wanna confirm that because if it's separate and apart from the sprinkler system and God forbid something happens, I want it on the record that it has its own.
It has its own.
Its own fire suppression. Okay, those are all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Dr. Quinns? Where are the paint cans stored?
In that same booth.
Okay, how many cans are at the same time?
I would say we would have a maximum of ten altogether, ten gallons. We keep five gallons of white and five gallons of paint on hand.
You have a, I think one of the, so we said places that an accident could happen is when you transfer from a gallon into the quartz, into the guns. Do you have a procedure in case you have a spillage there? Is there a, a plan?
There's a plan for, for.
Steps to take care of and all the equipment necessary to pick up the spill is listed right there and the equipment?
Yes, and the, and the employees are trained to do this if they were to spill and the.
I can hear you, sir.
The employees are trained to do this if there was a spill and the procedure is required to clean up any mess?
Is this, is this an oil base or a water based paint?
It's, I think it's a urethane polymer.
That's why you can go into a puck.
Right.
This polymer.
We utilize PPG coroflant is actually the paint we use.
Is there, is there any necessity for a township engineer to come in and inspect this on a six month or eight month basis? Make sure that everything is checked out?
I didn't understand the question.
You have, you have a hazardous material in the area, paint and solvent. You should have a plan in case you do have a spill. You said you do have one.
Yes.
We have to have somebody go in and make sure that what you're saying is true.
Sure.
So is there a, any kind of requirement or could we put a requirement in that somebody from the township engineer can often go in and check this out every couple of months?
They're more than welcome to come.
Yeah, Dr. Parker, I think, I don't, I believe it to your officials, your professionals.
Of course, sir.
Ask whether they want to just have the right to have a random audit or some kind of scheduled inspection, but either.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. In regards to the solvent, I know they come in and out in five gallon, you know, pails, right? How often do you get deliveries?
That's based on use and how busy we are and how much we're painting.
Okay.
I would say no more than one per month.
Okay, so low end. And how about the paint? How often do you get paint deliveries? Is it similar?
It's similar, yeah.
And then based on where the room is located, where would that come in from the building? So when you're getting a delivery of solvents and paint, at what point are they coming in? So right next to the?
Yeah, exactly.
And then do you have any procedures in place in regards to, you know, it sounds like the room is well contained, it'll be well protected. It sounds like from the start of production to clean up, it's all covered, right? But what happens if something breaks in the parking lot, a can is dropped, something breaks open, how is that being covered or addressed? What kind of procedures do you have in place and how are you gonna prevent that from happening? You know, as, as it was said, you know, that's why they call it an accident, right? So if something in a large quantity, because it will be at that point, right, you're gonna either have gallon containers of paint or a five gallon pail of solvent, if it should break outside of that room, fall off the truck, somebody falls over it, it's leaking, it's damaged, how is that gonna be addressed?
So the gallon containers of paint that we receive, they come with this plastic ring that's like a security seal on them.
Okay.
Right, they're, they're really pretty hard to, to actually open when we get them, let alone just somebody dropping it and opening up. It's not, it's, it's not like the hardware. It's not like going to the hardware store and getting a gallon of paint.
Okay.
It's a little bit different of a can. And the five gallon containers are gonna be handled by the person from Safety Clean. And that particular person is trained every day. That's what they do, so.
So does Safety Clean also bring the paint in or is that a different?
No, that comes from a different vendor. That comes from PPG.
Okay. And I'm assuming, you know, God forbid something happens, do they have training as well?
Right, we're gonna have training based on the, on cleanups.
Okay.
And, and these, these, I'm, to interrupt, these.
No, please.
These places usually have spill cleanup kits just in case
Okay.
of that emergency, so they can get out there right away and.
Well, the, the, Safety Clean comes to your facility, they're liable for the handling and
Right.
transport disposal and anything they would create. They have their own spill protocols.
Yes.
When they take, the, the, the system where the five gallon pail is stored, is that secondarily contained? In the event that pail ruptured, the, the box it's in as well is contained or not?
No, it's not secondary containment. That's just sitting under there and it's attached to, to the piece and it has just a regular shelf on it.
Okay.
So what happened for that, it would be very difficult for that to burst. I mean, you're, it's sitting under there and it's really just, just circulating with a pump in there that's circulating.
Right, Safety Clean comes in, they detach it, they seal it, they take that one out. When they come in with their hand truck or whatever they use to bring the new solvent in and take the old solvent out, do they have that secondary, do they put that in a secondary containment?
That, that I don't.
Bucket or pail?
That I don't know. I don't know what their procedure actually is, I mean.
They, they have a containment situation that they.
So when they're transporting it, whether it's ten feet or fifty feet from the booth outside to their truck?
They definitely have safety procedures in place for handling.
Okay.
That's all the questions I have.
Question.
Then I'm still intrigued. I got a, a list of questions, but I think we'll go through them quickly. The paint booth, is it regulated or permitted? Does it need to be permitted or regulated by any regulations?
It's not regulated, no.
No D E P permits, no air permits required?
No. It's all self-contained, it's all filters, it's, it's not, it's not a large generator of any kind. It's not a, it's very small compared to the other big commercial spray booths. This thing's only four hundred square feet. You saw I have a picture of it.
And I'm assuming the manufacturer has some type of certification that they provide you to guarantee its performance, correct?
We really went through a lot of lengths to find the best possible
Okay.
situation.
So the ventilation and the discharge from that booth meets minimum and does it, the minimum air permitting requirement?
Meets OSHA requirements for breathable air, yes.
As a regulator, yes. Okay.
And Mr. Sebastian, I know you looked at it, but just for the board or any members of the public listening, that's why we also gave you all the specs under category for the booth itself to just show you directly the level of sophistication of this.
Okay, thank you. The, you mentioned before you were using the word de minimis quantity, small, small operating generator
Yes.
status. Is that the current permit you have at your Whippenny facility?
We're currently not painting at our Whippenny facility. That's part of our transition to coming into Spark.
Okay, and they would operate under a small generator, de minimis status?
Yes, they would be operating under a conditionally exempt, small quality generator, C E, CEQG, okay? Which is less than two hundred and twenty pounds of hazardous waste per month or stored less than two hundred and twenty pounds hazardous waste onsite at any given time. That's what that C, CESQG is.
And you feel that you'll be able to comply and maintain that small generator status, the exemption?
Yeah.
Okay.
We would have to go into a much larger building to exceed that.
All right.
Did you hear that?
No.
Can you just, I'm sorry, can you please repeat that?
We would have to go into a much larger building and our facility would have to grow substantially to exceed the limits of material that he's.
You know, it's a timing issue with that. If an inspector came and you had a certain amount of spent product and or stored product on this facility, at the time of the inspection, you could be subject to not meet, it's a very, it's a very tight exemption. You could exceed that unless your, 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 your operating procedures and your best management practices take into that consideration that that material's moving in and out to maintain the gallonage or the pound, poundage below that status.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And compared to his uses, what's, what's in the requirement, I think he easily can meet that.
Maintain, okay.
And to answer your question, Chairman, on the thing, the airflow, that's in the booth, the airflow and that gets, creates fast effective overspray removal meets and exceeds OSHA requirements. So it goes down, provides five micron air quality.
Okay, and then as far as your, your management practices and your emergency plans of, do you, will you have at the facility a spill prevention and emergency response plan?
Yes.
At, at your facility and all the equipment and whether it's the rags, absorbents, cleaning material in that, in, and around that area?
One hundred percent, yes.
All right, and then employees will be trained to mitigate any spillage as well?
There'll definitely be a safety protocol in place.
Okay. And that'll be displayed publicly and?
They're gonna be trained in it, all of our, all of our employees.
We can, we can work with him on that. I, I know what you're saying. We could, we could put a protocol up. He's, he's looking for a protocol to be put up so that everybody knows what steps they have to follow for each procedure.
Sure.
We can go over that with you.
And then lastly, disposal records, Safety Clean comes in, they're required, they're doing your, your manifest, et cetera, and giving you your disposal records. Will they be available and maintained at the facility or require, how do you maintain your?
We're gonna maintain, well, everything intake and exta, exiting the building as far as whatever paint comes into the building, what it gets used for, what projects it gets.
Yeah, I think maybe my question is, do you have anybody designated on your staff as a compliance officer or someone at an executive level that will be responsible for those records?
We do. We actually have certain certifications through the ICC that require us to maintain records of, on our products through all of the manufacturing process and the paint is part of it.
Okay. I think I'm good. No further questions here. Thank you.
Mr. Kam, I have another question.
Sure.
We've been playing, we're about talking about the paint for a long time now, but you actually put out glass floors. Can we put some testimony in on how this is gonna work? How do you do this with the glass? How does the glass come in? How does the glass go out? How do you manu, handle it, cut it, polish it, whatever you do with it?
We bring in glass from a, a third party manufacturer as part of our assembly, right? So we don't cut it, polish it or treat it. We bring it in as a prefabricated component. We buy it from a third party fabricator for us.
Okay, so you don't, you just.
We're not, we're not making the glass component in our building.
Okay, I'll put that on the record. Okay. So everything that comes in pre-cut, pre-polished?
Pre-cut in cases.
Painting the strips in between it, the, what holds it together?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, just to clarify, I thought I heard something about welding.
We do some welding, yes.
Were you doing, are you doing any what, spot welding or welding or cutting of the, the metal coming in?
The metal, that's primarily what we're doing, right.
And where's that gonna be conducted? It's pre, it's pre, it's pre-measured and assembled already or?
We, we take in twenty-four foot lengths of extruded aluminum profiles, right? And we cut them, machine them, drill them and fabricate them to be a structural element of our framing system.
Okay, and that's done in the other space?
That's done in the other space. You can see there's, on the far right side, those are racks and those, those rectangles are, what I say, welding tables.
Okay, and again, similar questioning related to that activity, the drill cut, the, the machines that cut it, if there's any drill cutting or oils that are used to maintain the equipment or machinery and then your, the shavings and the, the cleanup of all the, the spent material from the cutting, how is that managed?
Same scenario. We have to document what we have in the building, what we're using it for. I believe we submitted to the town all of the, the fluids that we use within any of our machinery as far as lubricants. They're all non-toxic, right?
And that will keep you under the de minimis as well, even in counting?
Yeah, because some of it doesn't quantify, qualify, it's not hazardous.
And if no floor drains in where you're doing, there's no floor drains?
No floor drains in the building.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Simmons?
I have two questions, Mr. Chairman, I have. With the spray booth, does the manufacturer offer an option to put a secondary floor in that?
I don't, I don't know that. I know that there are pictures in the catalogs which show actually twelve by twelve in there, but that could be tile on the floor of some type. So I guess they leave that up to you, to what kind of surface you wanna put on top of the concrete. Some people might wanna put a rubberized surface for, you know, for the legs. Some people might wanna put epoxy down, depends on the, the user.
I was thinking more of a, a secondary floor, kind of just referring back to the water business. If you've got, say, sodium hydrochloride or any water, a lot of times with the five gallon drums, the carbos, they'll put that under a, on top of the secondary containment just in case you get a bad container and there's a leak, it'll be contained and not spill out.
Spill pallet, right.
I'm thinking, just thinking out loud with the board, we've got a five gallon containers, I understand, and solvent, which I understand is part of that recycling. And then you've got the ten gallons of paint. And again, I understand the detail lid on the top. But if that was stored as a secondary containment, just in case, worst scenario, if there was a rupture, bad container, whatever, it'd be contained and wouldn't go down on the concrete floor, is what I'm getting at.
I, I think you could use, like, similar to that, a spill pallet and put that system right on, it's just, you know, like normally you would have in, in regular buildings, would they, where they store drums of oil and everything, you put them on spill pallets for secondary containment. I think that would be able to be put under there, you could put a spill pallet under that.
The other item that I was, you know, based on what you said, I understand. that's certain in your Whippany locations, you don't paint on-site, you, I assume you contract with that, or something else like?
Yes, exactly.
I'm just asking, if you didn't have the paint here, would you still function and basically do the same thing?
It's a condition on us moving into this building. We, we currently are looking to take the paint in-house, where we're not at the mercy of third-party vendors to pick up our material, deliver our material to us at their schedule. We're looking to, it's really a major component of how we function, so it's.
Mr. Conklin, though, to be really direct to Mr. Simmons's question, if you could not have a small paint booth, you would not move into this property?
No, I wouldn't.
And it's, and it's actually a provision in your lease that the paint booth for this layout be approved, or you don't pay occupancy?
Correct.
That's all I have.
Based on Mr. Simmons's recommendation, would the applicant consider secondary, look at a secondary containment floor for the spray booth?
Yeah, as Mr. Rossi indicated.
We'll put a spill pallet.
I think yes.
Okay.
If acceptable, then so.
Not for the entire booth, just for the?
Just for the cleaner.
Right, understood. And nothing stored outside, obviously no drill cuttings, no storage or anything, anything of those lines? Okay, no further questions.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a question for Mr. Rossi, and that was, Mr. Rossi, you're an LSRP, and so you are very familiar with the ISRA program, correct?
Yes, I am.
And is this a manufacturing facility in use of Mr. Conklin's business, regulated by ISRA?
This would, I don't know what, I didn't get your, his number on that, was he, was he ISRA applicable?
NAIC code.
Yeah, NAIC, I didn't get that.
Yeah, they, we, we research that.
We're not required to be part of ISRA. You're terminating your, we, so you're weaving your facility in Whippany, did you trigger ISRA at that facility? No.
No.
Mr. Collins, with the addition of the painting and the welding of?
I think it is manufacturing which usually triggers a categorization. Mr. Rossi, can you do some research to?
Yes, we will.
Confirm that?
Yes, we will.
I think that, I'm trying to actually help you, if you're regulated by ISRA, that's actually better for you and for us. Because that means you would have to demonstrate compliance with ISRA upon any termination of the lease or transfer from this facility or sale of this facility. So it seems like it's a manufacturing use, which I don't believe there's any exceptions for manufacturing.
I would have to say it is applicable, so we would, we would check.
With this process, it would be applicable.
Yes.
What happens is, if you're manufacturing, you don't use any hazardous materials, perhaps, there's some, it's actually an exemption, but it's, it's not this, it's not, it's, now we're talking about, it doesn't, it's not based so much upon the quantity as it is based upon the fact that you're using hazardous material.
And the property owner's going to need to know that also, because that's going to have to be a component of the lease, because upon termination, you have that 30 days for termination.
He's going to get a de minimis exemption under ISRA and/or he's going to have to get a negative, a neg deck?
Right.
Sign off from it.
Yeah.
Right, so is there?
Would we want to see the lease agreement, Mr. Collins?
Actually, I'm just surprised that it's an issue. So I guess I'd like Mr. Rossi to, I mean, what is the SIC? I mean, that's pretty straightforward.
Correct.
So what is the SIC?
Yeah.
But it has to be the SIC that the, has a sign based upon this fabrication. The fabrication meaning the application of paint to aluminum and the cutting of aluminum. So, so that is not what Mr. Conklin does in Whippany. So, you know, I think it is regulated, so, and that's a good thing. So I'd like Mr. Rossi perhaps to follow up on this before the next meeting or something.
Well, based on their current business registration at the Whippany facility, they may have met a code that just was for warehousing.
That is not manufacturing.
That is not manufacturing, so they may just be transferring that business entity with that same applicable code.
Unless he's listed as fabrication.
Correct.
So if he's at fabrication, then he probably would be non-applicable in that facility. But here now, I wonder if he's spraying, it goes to manufacturing. If it goes to manufacturing, then he's going to have an applicable number under the national.
You may have to reapply for, or?
Sure, but just, just so the board understands, you know, Mr., I represent the landlord, right? And so, you know, Mr. Conklin's here without his attorney tonight. So I think that Mr. Collins's point is right on and fair. If Mr. Rossi will research the appropriate code, and if it applies, we'll certainly agree that adherence to all of the requirements be part of the approval.
It's not a limitation.
Absolutely, yeah. We, we would have to, regardless of whether you as a board hold us to comply.
You have to comply.
Because other folks are trying to, to make us comply. So of course.
Understood.
It's just that he doesn't know the answer tonight, and I don't have an easy way to find it, putting him on the spot, but we'll, we'll certainly research it, provide that information as part of any potential resolution.
Mr. Collins, open it to the public.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody in the public?
Action second, comments.
We're going to open it for public comment related to this application.
Or questions as well?
Yes, do I get sworn in?
I get sworn in.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Adrian Mierman, 12 Brook Drive, Sparta, New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, please go ahead.
I have a question, and I may just have missed it in the early testimony. It's about the filtration system. I heard several times that filtration system is self-contained. Does that mean that it will not exchange any fumes, any paint fumes, any solvent fumes into the air during the spraying process?
The, the system is self-contained, and it has its own air filtration system that gets filtered. All of that gets filtered, anything exiting is clean air.
And so where do the solvents go, but the fumes actually go, are they captured?
They get absorbed by the filtration system.
And so no fumes escape at all into the air? So there's no hazard to any surrounding businesses?
Nothing coming out of the air.
And no smells?
No smells coming out of it.
So, so that, so self-contained means truly nothing that's happening?
Right.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public? Good evening.
Mike, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do. What is the solvent you use in the spray process?
There's, we have an MSDS on it, we have it, it's called, I can give you the name of the product. It's called True Blue Paint Gun Cleaner, and of course, it has a.
Mike, she didn't hear your name when you were walking up.
I'm sorry. Michael Devine, D E V I N E.
It's, it's just called True Blue Paint Gun Cleaner.
Question is, do you know about its ignitability or its toxicity?
Yes, we do. We have, we supply everything in the report. It has, it has, it's flammable, liquid, vapor, toxic if swallowed, so no drinking. It's corrosive, has acute toxicity, there's health hazards, so that's why you have to be careful using it, and that's why it's.
So are there any sources of ignition in the paint booth, such as what powers your sprayer?
No, no, they're made specifically for that, so you don't end up spraying.
Do you, does this solvent attack whatever the seams are in your, the walls of your booth?
That is something for the manufacturer. I assume that is compatible with that material when they purchase it, because it's used routinely.
Okay. Now, when you, when you're finishing your process, I guess you're recycling concurrent with spraying, right? When, when you're finished, painting, does the material stay there to dry? Does it have to go into an oven or anything?
That would be the business owner that would have to answer that question.
The question would be, do you have to move it somewhere else to dry?
Mr. Conklin, you have to come to the mic, so you can hear.
The paint would air dry, it's about a four-hour process. And it's under heat. So when, when it's air drying, is the solvent coming off? Is that what, how it's drying? The solvent and the paint are two different components. No, I understand. The solvent is specifically used for cleaning the guns, and the paint is, is for coating the materials. For the paint to dry, though, is your solvent released from what's the paint is on the material?
Can you get closer to the right side, gentlemen?
Okay, you're using solvent, you spray the paint on the material, right?
Correct.
Okay, when you say it's drying?
The solvent, the solvent is for cleaning, the solvent is for cleaning the guns. The paint is separate from the solvent.
So you don't need a solvent for to spray the paint?
No, the paint is separate.
No.
The guns are cleaned in a cleaning, in a self-cleaning system. So you, you spray it neumatically? How do you spray the, how does your gun work? Through compressed air. And what's, what's in there? Just liquid paint, no solvent of any kind? So whatever, whatever solvent has the paint in liquid form is in there, I assume? The paint is in liquid form in the gun. Okay, so when, once this, once the spraying takes place and at the point in time when you clean the gun, is there solvent occupying the whole volume of the booth, or is it limited somehow?
The solvent, again, is in the five gallon container.
Yeah.
That, that's only get used when they clean the guns. They take the gun over to the cleaning, the cleaning area, and it circulates the stuff and cleans the gun so that the nozzles and everything will be cleaned, so the gun stays.
So solvent never volatile, it is inside?
Stays, no, it stays in. Show the picture. I'll help, this, this will help. It would be contained like that. The solvent's down at the bottom, there's a hose that comes up, the gun goes in there, they get cleaned, and then it just keeps circulating the solvent through here and through the gun.
Okay, and when you're recycling, did I understand you said you are recycling the solvent?
Right, right here, when these drums get picked up, as soon as these get spent, you can't, they don't dissolve the paint anymore, and they don't clean right. Then he calls up, they come in, they take that container, that five gallon bucket right there, take it out, and they put a new one.
Is recycling, is it because there's particulates embedded in the solvent, or is it degrading somehow?
Yeah, it's, it's the particulates of the paint that they get washed out to keep the gun clean.
Okay.
So it's no different when you wash your paintbrush at home, in turpentine, it's the same thing.
Okay, and when you're exhausting, as the previous gentleman said, when you're exhausting to the outside, do you have some kind of way of measuring to certify that the air is not containing contaminants?
Yeah, there is all kind of electronics that measure that, and it keeps, it keeps, goes through the filters. If the filters were to get plugged up or clogged or working inefficient, it shuts the system down.
Okay, kind of like a smokestack or something, it sounds like. I know you're not burning anything.
No, it's, it's, it's just a square exhaust.
I was going to ask if you ever had environmental issues at your other location, but apparently you don't use any hazardous materials there. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Okay. Then, Mr. Collins, make a motion to accept the application and the conditions, if you would like to read them.
Sure. So, Mr. Chairman, the board, the board might consider a motion to approve the preliminary and final site plan of the applicant, Six Iron Way LLC, for the proposed tenant Glass Flooring Systems, Inc., subject to the standard conditions, subject to the review report of the township planning board engineer, the fire department, and the police department, and subject to the conditions discussed this evening with the board, namely the requirement to install the containment.